I call the meeting to order. Good evening, everyone. Councilmember Ed O'Nby will bring our invocation and Pledge of Allegiance. Will you please stand?
Bow your head, please. Dear grace heavenly Father, Lord, we come for you tonight, as we've come so many times before, to do the business of the city, Father. And God, we do ask that you put your hand upon each and every councilmember here that's present, and those, Father, that are about to accept the new positions over the following days. Father, be and fill this room and this whole city with your wisdom, your knowledge, your conscience, and let everybody have your heart, Father, that they might truly do the will of the city and for the best interest of the people and those that they serve. Father, help them put all things aside and turn to you for wisdom, counsel, and advice. And bless everyone who's here, all those who are in attendance, and all those that are away. It's in Christ's name I pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Agenda item number one is Mr. John Williams to address the council, but I don't believe I see him here. So we will move along to agenda item number two, recognition of winners in our Images of Halton City photo contest. Fran?
Good evening, everyone. I'm here this evening to present to the winners of the annual Images of Halton City photo contest their recognition, and I wanted to share a little background with you about the contest. As I say, it's 12 years old. This is the 12th annual. The first year we had the contest, we had 36 entries. Each year it's grown in interest, and this year we had 245, which is a record number. I wanted to thank our sponsors, Halton City Beautification Board, who's sponsored from the very beginning, the Fort Worth Star Telegram, again, sponsors from the very beginning. They have published our photos, our winning photos for us for free, which is a great boost to our program. And Profoto, Photoshop on Roof Snow Drive in North Richland Hills. I also want to thank the library, because every year we use the library to display every single entry, and this year was a real challenge with 245 photos, just to find space for them. I hope that if you haven't been down to see the display, that you'll take the opportunity before Friday. We'll be taking it down and sending the photos back to the photographers. So without further ado, I would like to go ahead and name the winners in the contest, and some of them are here, some of them are not, and I'm not sure which ones are and which ones aren't. But Mayor, if I could ask your assistance. Mayor will present the certificates, and I will go ahead and hold up the winning photograph. First one goes to Mary Miller. I'll let you take that. Is Mary here? I guess not. After I'm done with these, I would like to leave them on the table over here so that you can come up after the meeting and look at them. They're really, really fine photos. Kathy Zaragoza, oh, here she is. She was honorable mention for the historical category, which we added this year as part of our 50th anniversary celebration. Kathy, congratulations. This next photographer, I don't believe he's here, his name is Ryan Thomas. He was honorable mention for color on the road, and let me show you his photograph. That's really quite unusual. Next is Amanda Hicks. She had honorable mention, black and white, on the road. Sorry. There you go. And then Mary Cox, honorable mention for animals. There's her photograph. Thanks, thanks, Mayor.
That's a hard job.
Catherine Fisher, honorable mention for Halton City scenes. Now we get into the money part. These photographers actually placed first in their categories and would be given $25 checks. First place for animals is Bridget Fagan, and she receives $25 and a gift certificate from Profoto, and this is just adorable. I know you can't really appreciate it from in the back, but I hope you'll come and look at it.
Since she's not here, we'll just have a drawing for the $25.
No, I'm going to go for margaritas. Next is Kristy Bortline, and I believe she is here. She's a student at Trinity High School. She won first place for her color photograph in the on-the-road category. Next is Brian Perot. He won for his photograph on the road, black and white. Oh, another check that we get to keep.
Another one we get to keep.
And here's his photo.
Fifty now?
Yeah, fifty.
Lots of margaritas.
We can eat besides drink. Next one is for Halton City scenes, David Harper, and he's not here this evening either. He's in class, but there's his photo.
Seventy-five?
Yeah. Okay. And I know this next gentleman is here, and this is Travis Rowland. Please come forward, Travis. Travis won not only the best-of-show category. They, out of all 245 photographs, the judges pick a best-of-show, and this was the best-of-show for his work. For his work, he'll get $75 for the best-of-show. And then he won in the Halton Cities 50 category, and this is his photograph in that category. And then for people and their activities, another category winner. And this, and I have to tell you that when the judges consider all the photographs, they're all placed out according to categories, but no one knows who's taking the picture. They never get to look at the back, which is where the name of the photographer is. So they call that a blind judging. I don't know if that really makes sense, but anyway, so they don't know who the photographer is. So for Travis to win three categories is really amazing, so congratulations, Travis.
And I want everyone to know, I want to say thanks to all those people that you thanked, and a special thanks to you, because I know a lot of work involved, and I want to tell everyone that I'm still feeling proud and progressive.
Our next agenda item concerns sidewalks on Kirby Street. Is Mrs. Gillespie in the audience? Would you come to the podium, please, and state your name and address?
Mayor, councilmembers, my name is Carolyn Gillespie. I live at 3824 Kirby, Halton City. I have with me statements from 11 of my 14 neighbors. It came to our attention one week ago that not only after a nine-year struggle, I was going to get a new street, I was also going to get sidewalks, which is between me and my neighbors, the most ludicrous thing we've ever seen. You know, we live on a dead-end street. There is no street train. I was told by Mr. Hughes, the city engineer, that he didn't recommend these sidewalks, and it was overruled by you as the council. So I'm here to plead on behalf of my neighbors, myself, that you don't destroy our neighborhood. We need the street. We don't need the sidewalks. My street ends midway down and becomes Fort Worth. You're going to build a sidewalk that stops in the middle of the street. It goes nowhere, nowhere. It's a waste of money. It's a waste of time, and it destroys the little old-town heritage of my neighborhood. My neighbors are 80 years old. They've all lived there. They all love it there. I live there. There's no crime. We like it there. We don't want a piece of concrete going down the middle of our yards. There's no reason for it. And I implore you to give me a reason for it. You know, my neighbors are here. They don't want it. For the life of us, we can understand. They tell me this has been on the agenda for two years. A week ago, I learned about it. You know, why weren't we asked? Why weren't we told? I received a letter on my door that said, "You're going to get a new street, new sewer system. Be happy, be proud." Nothing about a sidewalk. I called Mr. Hughes and asked that a representative come to my house and tell me what you're going to do. I pay your taxes. I want to know. I want to know what part of my yard you're going to dig up. And they told me, "We're going to dig up four feet, not only put in a sidewalk, but one wide enough for handicaps." There's nobody handicapped on my street. There's nobody on my street that uses a sidewalk. There's no reason for a sidewalk. There's, I have the names, the phone numbers, and they all agree with me. The only three people of the 14 houses involved, one is 83 and in the hospital. I couldn't deal with her. I've known her for nine years. I would not implore upon her at this time to deal with her.
I'm sorry to interrupt you. I was just going to ask a question. Where do we stand in the construction of this street? How far along are we?
They put like 10 feet of sewer line. That's it. That's it. They're to my house. Tomorrow, they put in my sewer service.
Yeah, I was just trying to find out if we were too far gone or not.
No, you're not.
I don't think we're too far. Greg, you want to comment on just where we are and what problems there might be in doing away with sidewalks at this stage of the game?
This is our city engineer.
The one I talked to on the phone. It's nice to meet you.
Yes.
Nice to meet you. After this item was put on the agenda, I immediately called the engineering firm that's doing the design for us, and I asked them that very question. It wouldn't cost us any additional money to change the plans at this point. To the layout of Kirby, it is fairly easy to delete the installation of sidewalks, and it's not really holding up the design, because this street is being bid out with two other streets that the engineer is working on those streets presently and waiting for the response tonight, or council's action tonight on this item.
Did you say you have, all of the neighbors are objecting?
I have 11 of 14.
11 of 14.
One is elderly. She's in the hospital. I could not deal with her. One is Hispanic and terrified of the authorities. He wouldn't cooperate. The third is a rent house. The person does not live on my street, rents the house. I've been on the city code for two weeks to get the yard mowed. They don't live there. They don't care. Those are the only three that I could not deal with. The rest of them are here, phone numbers, addresses. Some of the people are here.
Well, council, you've heard what the neighbors that live on this street have to say. They don't want the sidewalks. Mr. Eisen?
Certainly, if the council wants to delete the sidewalk requirement, it sounds like we can do that at no cost on the engineering contract, and certainly you'd save the construction cost as well, especially if you have a neighborhood that really doesn't care to have it.
That's right.
Well, you're going to skirt 100-year-old trees in a year. That sidewalk is going to buckle and look terrible, because you can't fit it into an old neighborhood like that.
Do I have, is someone ready to make a motion? Councilmember Markham?
Mayor, I move that we delete the sidewalks on this block of Kirby.
Councilmember O'Nby?
About a second.
I have a motion and a second. Are the rest of these lights for discussion?
Question.
Councilmember Hanselwing?
Just a quick question for Greg Van Nuys. I know Halton City stops and Fort Worth starts. Do you have any idea what the plans from Fort Worth coming from the west back to the east, if there's any, no knowledge of what their street reconstruction program?
No, I'm not. I haven't had an opportunity to contact Fort Worth on that issue.
Because it could happen just the opposite way. If they were reconstructing Fort Worth, we could have dead-end sidewalks that stop in Halton City, and it's, is the street, I know we dealt with this in the past, is there any additional right-of-way or anything that happens to be dealt with here?
Not on Kirby. Kirby does have adequate right-of-way, right-of-way for sidewalks.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Jennings?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I had a question for staff. What type of a dollar figure are we looking at saving the city by deleting these sidewalks?
I haven't figured out the cost on this project. However, the cost savings would all be in construction, and I would estimate $14 to $15 a millennial foot. If she's saying there's 14 residents, I'm going to guess seven on a side, somewhere in the neighborhood, you know, maybe 70-foot frontage. So if we do the math.
Well, there's only five on one side. We've got two huge, there's a UT, you know, a TU Electric easement that they're going to put a sidewalk down for no reason. There are fields on this street that have not, that are empty. You know, there's only five houses on one side.
I imagine the answer would be in the thousands. Thank you.
Councilmember Williams?
First, Mrs. Gillespie, I'd like to thank you for coming out and bringing your concerns to the council. If we don't know what you want, then we're not able to deliver that. I would like to have the list of names delivered over here to the city secretary. We'll have those on our file. And also, when they put your street in, there'll be no charge for the curbs or gutters either.
I know that. I brought Mr. Williamson out there, and he was very helpful, very informative. Your city employees that are out there working on my street are kind, they're sympathetic, they're very courteous. But my question to you, Mr. Williams, is if this has been on the agenda for two years, why did I only find out about it a week ago? Why?
Mr. City Manager, he'd be the one to answer that.
Why weren't we asked our opinion way back two years ago?
Actually, sidewalks have not been included in these projects for anywhere near two years. Several months ago, the council had instructed the staff on a batch of streets being done this year, and there are three of them, that we include sidewalks in the design for those streets. That also indicated at some point they would probably want to hear from neighbors to see if they had any interest in the sidewalks or not, and obviously, we're hearing from the neighbors on this street.
Well, but my point is, I got a note on my door that says, "We're going to start digging tomorrow." I was never informed.
And that note didn't mention sidewalks?
No, it did not.
Okay, well, that's helpful for us to know.
Sewers, gutters, curbs, that's all the notice said.
Yeah, and that's probably just a general notice we've used for years, because sidewalks typically are not.
Well, I think you need to, you know, rearrange. This is taxation without representation. I should have an opinion. I've lived there for nine years, you know, and to find out from your city people who I ask questions of, "Oh, you're going to get a sidewalk," is wrong. It's not right.
Well, and I think you're doing the right thing, expressing that view this evening, and it sounds, from what I've heard so far, the council's very sympathetic to your point of view.
Thank you. Councilmember Jennings?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would also like to possibly get the question of sidewalks placed on the survey that we had discussed. I believe we discussed trying to get that before the voters, and then we backed off of that idea, but I certainly would like to make it an integral part of that survey that we're going to have.
We'll make it a point to include that, council.
And also, I think we should also change the notifications that we're hanging on these doors from this point forward.
Oh, I agree, because it puts your employees in a bad position. I called the man that signed the letter and said, "Please tell me what they're going to do," because nobody ever told me. It puts him in an awkward position. You know, he has to come out and tell me what you've decided he's going to do, and that's not right. He's a good man.
I agree with you.
I have a motion and a second. Council, we're ready to vote. Motion passes unanimously. You're going home without sidewalks.
Thank you very much.
I failed to mention to you that agenda item number three has been moved to 17A, and as I look toward the back, I believe Mr. John Williams has now joined us, and I think his will take less time than the next agenda item. So, Mr. Williams, if you'd like to come on in. If you would please state your name and address for the record.
I'm John Williams. I'm, I live in the Crowley area. My address is 3309 Raleigh Drive, Fort Worth, Texas, 76123.
Welcome to Halton City.
Thank you very much. I would like to say hello to the mayor, Nancy Watkins, and Halton City Council. I'm delighted to be here and express my feelings concerning the behavior of a city councilman somewhere in late April of this year concerning a newspaper article that was in the Fort Worth Star Telegram, I believe, April 26. It was dealing with cultural antics and behavior that was very unbecoming of a public servant. As the sources revealed to me by telephone that these antics were very insensitive, derogatory, demoralizing, offensive, downgrading, obnoxious, and yes, even I was even hurt by the actions of this city councilman, intimidating the African-American culture. So councilmen, just want to say that I am very ashamed that your colleagues led you to this action out of character of a public servant. I do not want to leave out the others who led Mr. Williams astray by putting food by him as a little prop so he can go into his little actions, forming to impress his friends by derogatory insults about the American, African-American culture cannot or should not be tolerated. I am persuaded by my own convictions that I hate sin but love the sinner. Mayor and city council, I hate when people put down minority groups, and my convictions also warns me to forgive and to forget. It is hard to turn the other cheek, but I'm not here to tear down, but to build up. Where do we go from here, Mayor? We should always go to God in prayer for the right things, but there is a test that we shall apply at any time. I will use the four-way test of things we think, say, or do. First, is it the truth? Second, is it fair to all concern? Third, will it build goodwill and better friendship? And fourth, will it be beneficial to all concerned? Also, I would recommend some training in diversity and cultural sensitivity will better enhance the productivity of the city, the wealth of the city, and the concern for the community. Halton City has so much to give and to gain with its diverse population. We must all pull together to make a better tomorrow, a better future, a better day, and a better day for our children, our grandchildren, and even one day, our great-grandchildren. We can no longer afford a division, but let us let our lives and community and families have a part of a stronger and a bond that will keep us striving to become a better in our dealings with people. Mr. Williams, I charge you tonight to lead the way for diversity-rich community, a body of people. As Shakespeare once said, "For tis the mind that makes the body rich." Changing the way you think and feel about a people are important for the stability of Halton City. As I leave this city hall, may you remember the duties of a public that has assigned your hands to do: to be honest and fair to all, to love your neighbor as yourself, to walk humbly before men and speak nobly. Shakespeare also said, "Some are born to be great; some achieve greatness, and some have greatness thrust upon them." The last mayor, Watkins, Halton City Councilman, and Mrs. Helen Harris, may your intentions be right. May God forever bless you and guide you. Know what the city needs and have a plan how to move the city forward. And I want to thank you. May God bless you and Godspeed.
Mr. Williams, before you leave, I truly do thank you for appearing. I enjoyed talking with you on the phone that day, and I do want to let you know, I think I mentioned this on the telephone, that the article was very much blown out of proportion, and that Halton City is not, as a whole, a racial community. We have a very, oh, we have quite an ethnic variety here in our city, and we've made strides in this last year to really get them involved by forming even, by forming a minority committee. So I apologize to you for any wrongdoing you felt was done to you, and would love to just remove that and take it back. All I can say to you is, it really was blown out of proportion. We would never do that to another human being, and I'm so glad that you came and shared your views with us tonight.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Have a good day.
Thank you. The next agenda item, agenda item number five, is a request from Mr. Ray Eklund on the proposed IESI transfer station. The council and Mayor Protem Don Arp have requested that we recess to executive session, and when the council comes back in, Mr. Arp will be presiding over the meeting. We will recess at 8:00.
We need to read that in the record. The city council will meet with the city attorney in closed session pursuant to Section 55.071 of the Texas Government Code. We reconvene at 8:36 PM. We're discussing agenda item number five, the IESI transfer station, and I'd like to ask the city manager to speak on this item. We already have a, the city already has a contract with IESI, and he's going to explain some of the things that are going to be added to the existing contract that we have, and then I think the council probably has a couple of questions.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem. At your last meeting, you asked that I meet with representatives of IESI to determine if there were some additions and modifications we could make to the existing contractual agreement that we have with that company to try to address some of the issues that have been raised at public meetings by citizens of the community. I did have two occasions to meet last week with Mr. Tom Brown of the company, and as a result of that, we have reached, have reached some suggested and proposed modifications to the contract, which Mr. Brown and his company are in agreement with. If the council is in agreement with these, the next step would be to actually prepare a formal contract amendment with each of these specific items included in it, which then would be considered by you at your next meeting. The proposed changes, just to summarize in general terms, are, first, adding additional language that would require that IESI would respond to and correct any problems, odor problems, that are reported to them by the city within 24 hours of that notification by the city. Second, that all processing and unloading, with the exception of a citizen dropping off some recyclable items, must take place inside the building. Third, all containers for recyclable goods that would be located on the facility would have to be located on the south side of the building, just off of the ramp that was shown on the approved site plan. The intent of that would be to keep them out of the sight of adjacent The intent of that would be to keep them out of the site of adjacent properties. Fourth, that no more than six containers could be kept on the site outside the building, and these containers would have to be covered at all times. Fifth, no outside storage would be allowed except for those covered containers, which would be limited to six at any one point in time. And finally, last, if a railroad crossing signal is to be constructed at Minus Drive, the company would pay the cost of the signal upfront. Those costs would then be amortized over the remainder of the 25-year lease agreement. It would be considered by the company and the city to be a cost of operating that facility. So then, the result of that would be that the royalties that the city received, 50% share of profits, would be reduced accordingly. Those are the agreements that we had reached last week. Certainly, I'd be pleased to answer any questions that the council may have with regard to any of those items.
Okay. Are there any questions from the council this time? Councilmember Henshaw.
I have a quick question really on this item number six. Is there, Bill, I know this facility isn't built, we have no idea what potential profits might come from it back to the city, and the fact that we had absorbed the cost of a railroad crossing to be put in. Do we have a sense that we'll always be in the black regarding this facility if we have to pick up the cost of, half the cost of a railroad crossing?
I think your initial statement was correct, and that is that, you know, this facility's not in operation. We don't really know what kind of usage there's going to be. We don't really know what those profits are going to be. That was one of the reasons that such a large, in advance, payment was required from the company. And can I tell you that there will definitely be profits remaining after splitting the cost of the signal some of those years ago? I couldn't tell you that. And I don't think that anybody could at this point.
Sure. I can understand that. There's a lot of unknown there. But what is the potential cost of putting a railroad crossing in at that intersection?
We have installed one other signal in town. I would say that that was probably a more complicated signal than this. The roadway that it covers is much larger, and as a result of that, all the mechanical parts are bigger, and it's just a more expensive item. It was $130,000 to $140,000. But again, I think this will be substantially less than that, just because it will be a smaller signal, and will cover a much smaller width of area.
Okay. Thank you very much. I've got a couple of questions for Tom Brown with IESI. There's been a lot of discussion, a lot of talk, and a lot of, I guess, negotiating back and forth. One question I have for you is, I did talk to some of the folks down at the state today. As far as the percentage that you've requested, the 500 tons, and I think you explained the reason you picked 500 tons is you picked a geographical area, and you figure that was the amount of tonnage required to serve that particular area, five-mile radius, is that?
I'm not sure of the mileage radius, but yes, we did pick a service area that would include a potential of 500 tons.
Okay. If you were to change the tonnage requirement for your registration, would that cause you to have to re-submit for registration?
Unfortunately, I didn't bring our engineer with me tonight, and I really don't know the technical answer to that question. It could.
It could, yes. I just think a lot of the concern that was brought up by the citizens, I think it's a very valid concern, because the tonnage in this facility is pretty much paramount, it's the key, to a lot of the hazards and the negative sides of it, of this facility. And I was just curious if IESI would be interested and are be willing to look at maybe a lower number as far as the total tonnage?
No, sir, not at this time, no.
Not at this time?
There is a 3,000-ton-a-day transfer station going to south of there on Elliott Reader Road. I mean, I'm not sure what the potential for us ever getting to 500 tons there might be.
Sure. I just think the number itself, which is, that's more refuse than a Halton City. A quick question, do you have much refuge Halton City produces?
On a daily basis? I'd have to do some figuring. It's probably in excess of 150 to 200 tons a day, I would believe.
Okay.
Somewhere in that neighborhood.
One of the other big concerns is this is, is there a way to do this facility without having household refuge go through this facility potentially?
Well, again, we do not intend to bring that there initially. I mean, I've said that several times. I know, and that breeds a lot of other questions about when and how and everything. I don't know what's going to happen for the next 25 years, and I can look backwards 25 years at this industry and pretty much see where it's gone, but I don't know where it's going to go for the next 25 years, so I would not want to limit myself in that regard.
I would like to, I guess, to follow up. If you could check and see if it would cause you to re-submit for registration. That's just a real concern that I've got from all the citizens. We've had a real big influx of feedback, and yes, there's been numerous, five or six public hearings on this. There's been a lot of dialogue. People have been involved at different points along the way, but their concerns are still valid, and I also realize that there's a facility six times the size of this potentially going in not too far away, and that's a big concern too. And we'll try to deal with that issue as best we can, but right now, we have to deal with the issues that are before our citizens, and that's this issue. I would like to know if, you know, an illegal answer to if that would cause you to re-submit your process. We don't want to delay you for another six months. We want to get the thing done, but we want to try to also find a happy medium between your company and our citizens.
Okay. I will definitely check on that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Mr. Ray Eklund, you had asked to speak to the council. You've spoken on several occasions, and would you please limit your discussion to anything that's new? Because I think we've heard, you know, already your concerns. We've answered, I think, most of those tonight.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, Mr. Arp. I'm not sure how much is going to be news or not. I'm just, I would like to go over some of the things that Mr. Brown just said. First off, if I'm not mistaken, Mr. Brown, the application doesn't list a radius at all, but rather it lists Richland Hills, North Richland Hills, Hurst, and Halton City as the primary people that are going to be bringing or allowed to bring trash here. And the way it was explained in the meetings from the IESI staff was that other people would not be allowed to bring that in. So although, for example, Riverside is only a couple miles down the road, they weren't listed in the application as their service center, their area of service that they would have here. So as far as the 3,000 tons-a-day transfer station, which is in fact, has a public hearing coming up in the near future, and it's going to be in Hurst on Elliott Reader, just south of here. I spoke with one of the representatives this afternoon, and we've set up a tentative meeting, which I'll probably have to reschedule, but we're going to discuss some issues much the same that we'd like to discuss with you tonight regarding the traffic flows and things like that. Back to the amount of tonnage, your question here, some of the data that we've received in the past in the same room from the company and through their application, they've listed an estimate, one ton of trash per person per year. So when you do the math, Halton City, if their population is 38,000, that would represent for 107 tons per day if everybody produced one ton. There seems to be some discrepancy in the application and some other things out there, whether people actually produce an entire ton. I think, I mean, we're getting a little better, and we're about 10% below that according to some areas, but not to dispute that. But that, your number would, Halton City would boil down to about 107 based on those things. What I would like to talk to the council about, and I understand the new council members will be voted in, I mean, placed in office tomorrow night, now, for some reason I thought it was tonight, but I would like to ask the council members here that will be serving us again for the next two years, and those that are continuing your service to us, and those that are coming in, I'm sure you're here in the audience as well. Now, this is a very complicated matter. It's got a lot of details to it. It's got a lot of contracts, and it's got a lot of time elements to it. And I would like to ask you all go over that very closely, okay? A lot of people come in here and they wash this with a broad brush and try to tell you, well, you know, we're stuck with it, we've got to do this and that. And what we've learned, those of us that were able to make all the meetings, is that there's a lot of little details that are left unanswered, and it's up to the council. You are our last best defense, okay, to make, take care of this issue for the citizens. And I would ask that you not be intimidated by the company looking to haul in costs for themselves or take care of their business, okay? You here, and you've given your time and your effort to serve the citizens, not any particular business interest, and I would like for you to keep that in mind. I'll be happy to meet with any council member or staff member, anybody, anytime, any place to bring the papers that I got, and I got a bunch of them, okay? So if there's a particular area that we need to discuss, I'd be happy to do that later. On a personal level, I live not too far from down there. I live in the southern part of town, not too far from the freeway. A lot of these people out here do as well. My granddad bought that place, and then my mom bought it from him, and I bought it from her, and I was hoping to pass it on to my kids and watch my grandkids grow up underneath that big old tree out front, and that's what we want. We want a property that will continue in a neighborhood that will continue to thrive and go on for many years, and we can't cut it off with a bunch of garbage trucks, which is what we're going to be faced with. Between this site and the other one, we're going to have a tremendous flow of traffic coming through there on both sides of it, on Midway and down Carson Street. It's a problem. We counted garbage trucks the other day. They weren't IESI's trucks, okay? There were four of them in 15 minutes, right during the time the kids were going to school, on South Burgville down there. So we're trying to revitalize our older southern end of town, and I would like to ask the council members here and the ones that are being elected to keep that in mind. You know, let's make positive improvements down on our end of town.
How do you propose to regulate traffic going to another city?
I got a plan.
What is it?
The plan is to put up no through trucks, okay? You put up trucks, let them come here and deliver. If somebody's got business down here, then we'll deliver to your business, and that's fine. We don't need through trucks.
Through trucks, that's what they would be doing. They'd be going down there, dropping their load, coming back out. That's not a through truck.
That's, no, when they go to Fort Worth, it's a through truck, okay?
We need to wrap it up. I've got three more cards.
Okay. I would like to ask you to protect us the best you can from the litter problems, the traffic problems, and the property value problems that we're going to have when this comes in there. I ask you to protect the image of our city and look at these details. There's a lot of them, and for all these council members that are here and the ones that have come on, that's why I'd like to ask you on behalf of the citizens. Thank you.
Kathy Hiles.
Mayor Pro Tem and council members, my name is Kathy Hiles, 2324 Manita. I've spoke with you three times already. I live less than a mile from this proposed site and work a few blocks away at an elementary school with 400 or so kids. I've already expressed my concerns about odors, the image of Halton City, the environmental concerns, and I think what bothers me most, I'm reviewing the audio and videotapes, which I listened to the tapes again this afternoon before I came in, a lot of inconsistencies, in my opinion. Mr. Brown answered a question just a few minutes ago initially this, and he doesn't want to limit himself to something at that point, and there's just a lot of statements they made like that. I think they're leaving it wide open. On the registration application that I saw, they are not, they're not applying for registration for a convenience recycling center. They're applying for a municipal solid waste transfer facility. It's in writing there. I'm sure you've all seen it. The lady at TNRC, TNRCC, I quoted her last time, and even if he proposes to do one thing, they can legally bring in the 480 tons of municipal solid waste, household garbage. My question tonight is, can Halton City ask them to specify in their application that they will not bring the household garbage through, and not just initially? Can Halton City ask or require them to apply for that different type of registration that will ensure the citizens that the household garbage will not be accepted there? Another thing I read in the application was that they had four choices of how to control odors, and I've not heard that answered in this. I've heard that if they don't anticipate odors, if there are odors, there are things they can do about it, but I have not heard what they will do about it.
Says in the number-one item tonight is that IESI will respond to and correct any odor problems within 24 hours of notice by the city.
Do you know by which method that's specified by TNRCC? There are four methods. Air scrubbers, and I forget, I don't have all the paperwork with me.
I don't know. I just know that we're going to have language to that effect.
Okay. And it says that they will?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Is there any chance of getting a different registration, a different facility that will not bring that household garbage in? I know they've said if they bring a truck and it has 50% corrugated, well, they will bring that truck on through, but if you have a company over here that's regularly getting rid of 50% corrugated, I don't see why they're not supplied with a container to pick up and recycle that corrugated in the first place without having to haul all the garbage through.
I can't answer that. I don't know. Tom, can you answer that question?
Sure. The main reason is the companies typically don't want to go through the expense of separating it at the source. It is an extra expense. A lot of times, they don't have room for a separate container. It's their choice, obviously. If they have a container that are strictly for corrugated, then it would go directly to a recycled facility.
Thank you. You need to start trying to wrap it up.
Okay. I just, I know you're in the final stages of this, but I hope you all have reviewed all the information and read carefully, because I'm not a lawyer by any means, but there are things in that registration application that bother me as a citizen. I know we had over 100 names on a petition of people that feel the same way, and I know this was done in '96, but the fact that Fort Worth has one on their farthest end of town, right here by Halton City, and we have one, and then Richland Hills has one, it's almost like if four states all put all their garbage in Texarkana. I feel like everything's landing down there on the south end of town, and that does disturb me. Thank you.
Thank you. Wayne Iverson?
I'm the one, Mr. Henson, gentleman.
Okay. Thank you. I believe Jim Lewis, I believe that's what it is. Is that correct?
Mayor Pro Tem, city council members, thank you for taking the time to hear our viewpoints this evening. I reside at 6310 Airport Freeway with my business, also in the managing partner of all the properties along 6310, 6312, 6314, 6316, 18, and 20. I fielded quite a few calls from some tenants that we lease some property to there and said, "What are you doing about this problem?" And I said, "Well, we've been to the city council meeting," and they said, "Well, one of the large tenants," and they asked to be not named tonight, "said, 'We're up for lease renewal here in two years. We're certainly going to take that into consideration in our 131 employees that office, work, and spend their money here in Halton City.'" That's of great concern to us. Our park has just recently gotten full of tenants in all our warehouses. If we have to contend with this along Airport Freeway, understand that the odor problem is addressed here, but it hasn't been defined how that's going to be addressed. That's a problem that I'm going to have to deal with with those tenants. Any falling debris from the trucks. In the past, when the city landfill was there, we had guys on our property that picked up trash almost every day. The city was very helpful. When we'd call them, they'd send someone out and pick up stuff along the road. I know that was one of the discussions in the first meeting that I attended, that IESI said, "We'll take care of that. We'll take care of the road." I think we're sitting here making decisions tonight and in the future that are going to affect us, not five years, not 10 years, but for 25 years around that quarter. We think we have a nice investment of our money and our time in that facility, and we ask you to consider that as you consider this item on this agenda. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I have no more speaker request cards, and, uh, I would entertain a motion to have this placed on the, on the agenda for the next meeting. These six items that we have discussed to be added to the contract. Councilmember OMB?
I'd make that motion.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second? Councilmember Henslering?
Well, I was going to ask you a question. I'm sorry, guys.
Okay, that's fine.
I've got things up here. Um, we're gonna, we're gonna add the request that ISI consider a lower tonnage?
Sure, you can, you can have them discuss that between now and then. Get some information.
I'd like to add that to this list of six. I guess make it item number seven, and that would be to, uh, discuss a compromise with ISI as far as consideration of a lower tonnage of refuge.
Okay, we have a motion to do the six added to the contract, bring the language to the council at the next meeting. Is there a second? Councilmember Williams?
I've got a question, uh-
Okay.
... the address that the lady brought up on the corrugated and the trash being mixed together in the bins, uh, as a very important item she brought up. Is there any way that, of course, some of this is going to come outside of Halton City, but is there any way that we could control to where we would, uh, keep them, the corrugated and the trash separated?
I thought that Mr. Brown answered that and said that some of the customers don't have enough room to have two containers. Mr. Brown?
I think he said that they didn't want the extra expense.
Yeah, a lot of businesses don't want the extra expense and manpower separating it themselves. Um, some do, some don't, uh, but the vast majority of them don't. I mean, it's, uh-
I know, like at McDonald's, they have a, one that's just flat corrugated, and then the other one's for the rubbish.
That would be one example, yes, but there's, there's, I can name you 100 examples where they don't, either, either don't want to or don't have enough space for a container or just don't have enough corrugated to make it worth their while. Because, you know, if, if they have 50% of 10 pounds a week, it's really not worth them doing much with it, so. Um, the road issue was brought up as well. We, we do, we do, in our application, intend to pick up the roadway, um, both ways from the facility, and, um, and the registration we're going after, we must recycle at a minimum 10% of the volume coming into this facility, so it's not, as was said earlier, just a garbage transfer station. We have to, by law, by our registration, recycle at least 10%. We anticipate doing more than that, but that's our, that's our minimum.
Okay, one other question while you're up here. Uh, the odor has come up.
Yes.
If there's a problem with the odor, and it says here that we'll be, uh, corrected within 24 hours, if that problem is not corrected, where do you stand?
Well, the TNRCC can shut us down. They can take our permit away from us, and, um, and City of Halton City, um, certainly has the right to inspect us as well, but the TNRCC can take our permit from us.
So if you, if you cause us a problem with odor, we can shut you down?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And if any citizen calls TNRCC, um, any citizen calls TNRCC, they have the obligation to come out and investigate and make their own determination.
If I may add to that, Councilmember Williams, the, the contract that we have in place today says if there are any breaches or violations of the contract, contract can be canceled for that reason, and if this were an ongoing problem that wasn't getting corrected, then, uh, in my legal opinion, uh, that would give the, the city the ability to cancel the agreement, uh, cancel the lease.
So if he doesn't take care of his business, he loses the entire contract?
He could lose the lease agreement with us as well as the registration rights that he has with TNRCC, yes, sir.
Yeah, I've already got, uh, over $200,000 invested in this facility, and, uh, by the time it's finished, we'll probably have a half a million dollars. I certainly am not going to risk a half a million dollars of my money over, uh, over a smell issue. We're not going to have it.
Councilmember OMB?
Uh, not withdrawing my motion at all. I want, I want my motion to go, but, uh, I want to point this out, too, and I don't know how many people out here in the audience did this, you know, I know we had an election Saturday, but we also had a free landfill there where you could take your stuff out there and dump it if you wanted to. How many of y'all knew that? Is there anybody in the crowd who took advantage of it? I did. I still had time to vote and do both, and I, I, I gotta tell you this. I went out to their facility out there off Dick Price Road, and there wasn't even an odor out there. These guys did a good job, okay? And that's a dump, okay? Now, that's a dump. It really is. And comparative to anything we had around here, they did a good job. Is it perfect out there? No, I'm not going to tell you that. That was a dump, but they did recycle and they did everything out there said they would. And I drove out there with my load intentionally so I could see what they did do out there. Uh, do I want odor over here? No, I don't want, I live on the south side, too, and I was talking to Doye. He doesn't live too far up on the south here either, and I don't think anybody intends or wants that at all. Uh, you're right, it, it started in 96, and we're trying to rectify it to the best we can. That's why we're trying to get Tom to agree to as many things as possible. That's why we're making the motion now to go back and see if we can add this stuff into it. I would like to direct the staff to, you know, continue to pursue this in any way possible, but, uh, right now, all we can do is try and get IASI to work with this, and at this point, I think they're willing.
Very good. Now, we have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second? Councilmember Henslering?
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Please signify your vote. Motion passes unanimously. Okay, now, we'll request that, uh, Mayor Watkins come back in and start with the next agenda item.
Mayor Pro Tem, Donald Arp has to leave early this evening, and we had moved the presentations to the end of the evening. Let me ask Councilmember OMB and Councilmember Quinones if, um, you would like to wait and do yours at the end, or shall we just go ahead?
I think we're almost through.
Well, we're going to do Councilmember Arp's now. If you will join me at the podium, please. Councilmember Arp did not run for reelection. He's given five years to Halton City, and we're very proud to have had him, and I'd like to just read this for you. Presented to Don Arp with sincere appreciation for your service and devotion. Councilmember Place Five, City of Halton City, August 1995 to May of 2000. Don?
Thank you. Well, thank you very much. I appreciate it. I've spent five years now doing the duty of the city. We've seen a lot of, a lot of things happen here. We've, uh, built a new city, uh, police station. We've built several city parks. We now have streets being fixed, the worst ones first. We went through the city and did some rezoning of some land and made some sense of it, called the Comprehensive Land Use Plan. There's been a lot of things that's happened that's good for the city, and I would like to challenge the new council members coming on board to continue the good work of the city. You're going to have your work cut out for you. Thank you very much. We've enjoyed it.
We'll now proceed with our regular agenda, which is the consent agenda. We've made some changes in the consent agenda. We have removed agenda item number 11. We have tabled agenda item number 10, and we have added agenda item number 15 and number 15A. And with that, council, we'd be ready for a motion. Councilmember Markham?
Madam Mayor, I move that we pass the consent agenda with the changes made.
Thank you. Councilmember Williams?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Please register your vote. Motion passes unanimously with Don Arp not being in attendance. We will now take a separate vote on agenda item number 11. Uh, Mr. Eisen?
Interestingly enough, this item was pulled from the consent agenda by Councilmember Arp, who is no longer with us this evening. Uh, but what the, uh, specific item is, is a, a request to authorize, uh, the, uh, request or, uh, application for grant funding under the federal COPS program, which is a program that provides, uh, grants to local governments to, uh, increase, uh, police forces, particularly in the areas of, uh, community, uh, service-type policing or community, uh, policing. Uh, Chief, would you like to make just a few comments, uh, about the application being proposed, and I'm sure as part of that you'll cover that this is an application only, not, and the acceptance will be down the road somewhere?
In fact, I'll start with that. This request is application only. Uh, if it is approved, for us to apply, the city is not in any way committed to acceptance of these grants. Uh, what we've proposed for you is the addition of several, uh, positions within the police department. These are positions that would further our community-oriented policing efforts. Uh, the federal government, as you well know, many years ago, started funding grant positions to, uh, in essence, put, put forward community policing programs in communities. It's done so because community policing initiatives are the ones that worked. Uh, typically, police departments have been reactive, and we've lost the battles. Uh, when we get on the proactive side of things, crime rates go down. So, in essence, what we're asking is to be able to further the community policing efforts here in Halton City. Our Neighborhood Watch Program has been highly successful. You've seen the decline in, in the crime rates down District One. Further proposal would be, uh, based on some comments by citizens and members of the council also for a police athletic league. This would attack problems associated with at-risk youth in our community, give them a place to be, provide role modeling, mentoring, uh, provide them life skills. You know, in essence, we're going to deal with some children either on the back end of the problem or on the front end of the problem, and if we can, if we can divert it on the front end, then we're all better off. What we're asking tonight is permission to apply for the grants, and, uh, like I say, later, we'll come back with more detail if, in fact, these are awarded, and council would at that time be able to decide whether to accept or deny these grants.
Thank you, Chief. Uh, we're ready for a motion. Councilmember Williams?
Move the approved resolution, number R-2000-2704, cop grant.
Councilmember Quinones?
Uh, yes, well, at least not for a second. I would comment on-
Okay, let me see if I have a se, uh, Councilmember Henslering, is yours for a second?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
All right. So we do have a motion and a second. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, Councilmember Arp had asked to pull this, and the reasons he gave, which were some, thank you, John, which were some similar to what, uh, concerns I had, that original proposal had called for nine additional officers, and, of course, the revised proposal was for four, but rather than get into a long discussion of all the reasons, I just have some, some, seem to be open-ended areas as to what cost the city's going to bear after this grant goes out, and I understand this is just an application process, but I know that how these things work, once they get started, it's kind of very rare that they turn down. Uh, I'm concerned about the cost in the out years for the city to bear, uh, if, once we begin to assume the load on it, and we have a crime control tax coming up, which may or may not be renewed, which I'm assuming that if it is, or is not, you know, that's where a lot of this revenue's going to come from. So I have some concerns about that and, and about creating a, uh, athletic league for at-risk, because one of the questions that I have is, we can create all these things, but we've still got to get the kids involved, and if they don't want to do it, there's nothing we, no amount of money we can do to make them unless we compel them, and I don't feel real comfortable about the city making, beginning to, to do those types of things and have that kind of control over our citizens. There's a lot to commend, uh, community-oriented policing, but I feel very uncomfortable with the amount of numbers involved and the concerns that I think Don had and that I have also about adding new officers that are ill-defined in, in terms of what we're doing here, I would just vote against it at this point.
We have a motion and a second. Please register your vote. Motion passes with Councilmember Quinones voting against Councilmember Arp not in attendance. The next agenda item is a public hearing. Mr. Eisen?
This public hearing is with regard to a zoning application, actually, for a conditional use permit for a property located at 5200 Airport Freeway. The purpose of the conditional use, uh, permit is to allow for the refurbishing, sale, storage, and distribution of automobiles, uh, from that location, and the applicant, Mr. Baker's here this evening, if you have any questions of him.
I'll now open this public hearing. Does the applicant wish to address the council, or do you want to just see if there are any questions? Please state your name and address for the record.
I'm Stephen Malik, I'm 3454 Mist Hall Court, Fort Worth, Texas, 76109. I'm the developer and contractor for Mr. Baker. At this time, we'd ask that, um, we be able to hand out what I would call, I guess, an addendum to the site plan to show what, um, on the property, we had left out some parking in, which is east of Lot AR, and I brought copies for the councilman to, and the mayor to take a look at. Yeah, but I'll let Ms. Mitchell explain it.
Lot better than I would.
Um, what it is, is that when this went before the Planning and Zoning Commission, and I'm going to undo this so I can show you the area specifically that we're talking about. Thank you. What you have in your council backup as far as a site plan shows this area right here. It shows this particular area up here is not having anything. The Planning and Zoning Commission at the meeting, uh, one of the Planning and Zoning Commissioners asked what they intended on doing with this part right here, and Mr. Baker at that time had said that he would like to eventually have, um, parking and storage of, of some of his vehicles on that portion of the property, but because this, when the site plan went out to surrounding property owners, this wasn't shown on here, as well as the fire department not being able to review it to determine if the fire lane was adequate, what the Planning and Zoning Commission did was on their recommendation, they recommended approval with a note being placed on the, on the site plan that you all have that says that no storage of vehicles can take place in this location without approval of the city. So what the applicant is requesting tonight is to see if you all would, instead of look, considering the site plan that's before you, consider the site plan that they're proposing, and they brought some large copies to pass out so that you all can look at that area. So that kind of gives you, I'll let him take over from there.
Can I answer any questions? Just keep on boards, please.
All right, sir.
Okay. Well, I'm just trying to give everybody a chance to take a look at it. Basically, in our minds, we had always considered this, you know, part of the facility, overflow parking, if you will. Mr. Baker usually has vehicles coming in once or twice a week that we recondition and store it. Mostly, we're going to store vehicles in the 15,000-square-foot warehouse, but it, from time to time, there's going to be vehicles back here. I know that there'd be concerns that this may become a junkyard with racks of, of car parts. That's not the issue. That's not the intention, nor would, I, I assume that your code enforcement officer would appreciate that. This is also an area that's going to have a eight-foot fence, wood or, it, wood and security fence with a 10-foot foliage bumper, uh, buffer around the entire project. The only neighbors that I think that we're going to affect would be Vaught, which is to the right, which is Zone M2, and Mr. Baker's father, um, which is Zone M1, which is RV World. So it's, it's basically just an extension of the project, and we're asking that you consider that as well this evening. that as well this evening when you vote. Can I answer any questions?
Councilmember Jennings, you have a question?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I have two for staff. Question number one, does the amended site plan meet the fire codes as they stand today?
The Fire Department has not had an opportunity to look at this. However, the architect did have the regulations for the fire code as far as the radius are concerned, and it does appear that it does meet that. Before, we would issue a building permit or a certificate of occupancy, we would make sure that this does meet it. If it doesn't, it's a matter of possibly losing two or three parking spaces at most to be able to attain that.
Question number two, would the lot be approved hard surface?
Yes, it would be. They intend on putting asphalt there.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Councilmember Hanselring?
This is a question for Karen as well. Through the P&amp;Z public hearing, was there any neighbors that came forward to talk about this either way?
As you all recall, when this came through as a replat, there were some neighbors that were very concerned about a couple of issues at this location. One of the main issues was they wanted to make sure that no access was on Eden, off of Eden Avenue. And so what the owner did was went around and actually visited with those folks, as well as some other folks in the neighborhood, presented this, minus the area that we're talking about right now, what's in your packet, presented that to the Planning and Zoning Commission. Actually, those folks that were, had concerns, came to the Planning and Zoning Commission and were very much for this project. Even when it was discussed of putting storage in this area, they did not appear to have opposition to that.
Okay. On that idea of storage, it just came up, I was thinking of whole cars and overflow cars that might, leasing or sell or whatever. We're not talking about storage in terms of parts of cars and motors and engines and things like that. We're talking about vehicles.
That's correct. The way, yeah, the way that they have told us and the way that the public notice went out, it would be storage of vehicles, not parts or dismantled vehicles.
Great. Thank you very much.
Councilmember Markham?
Madam, thank you, Madam Mayor. Will you line up for a motion?
Not quite yet.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I'll come back to you.
Okay.
Is there anyone else in the audience that wishes to speak for this agenda item?
Oh, she's already in there.
Anybody wishing to speak against this agenda item? I do have a speaker's card from Wayne Iverson. Please state your name and address for the record.
Yes, Madam Mayor, thank you. Wayne Iverson, 3033 Halton Road. And Ms. Mitchell kind of stowed my thunder a little bit here. I was more concerned about where you were going to actually unload the vehicles. I drive by there quite often, and I'm away from home and to work at all hours, and I noticed that you are unloading vehicles there quite a bit. And I'm just concerned, because the streets that are around there have just totally been reconstructed, okay? And I'm just concerned, I know the vehicles that you're bringing in are big vehicles, they're bringing in several, you know, eight, six, eight, 10 cars at a time and unloading them. And my concern is, is I don't want to see the roads tore up up there. And are you still going to be, unload them off the access road? Or are you going to be, where will you be trying to do that?
Sure.
Sure, okay. That is my concern.
When people come off of 121, generally, they'll come into the egress side of the project. They'll come in and offload cars and then horseshoe around and come back out. There should not be a need for loading or unloading of cars on any city, on any Bay Ridge streets, Eden, Catawba, or Lower Birdville. In fact, there's no access to this except from State Highway 121. So that should probably help.
Sure. Well, that was my question, because tonight, when I left, and believe it or not, some people won't believe, I got off early tonight. I got off early tonight, and I kind of drove by there, and I noticed that RV World in the point had parked a couple of RVs there. And they came down Service Road, and then went up and went to their place right there. And I'm just concerned to see a vehicle of your weight, or the vehicles that bring in that weight, tearing up those roads right there, because those roads have just been reconstructed. And maybe in hindsight, it might have, should have been concrete instead of asphalt, if, you know, might have made things a little bit better. But I just wanted to make sure that...
Everything on 121.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Wayne. Is there anyone else wishing to speak against this agenda item? If not, I'll close the public hearing and move to the corresponding ordinance. And now, Councilmember Markham, if you're ready for your motion.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Orders, I would move that we pass orders number 0-2000-015-15, CU-003-00.
Thank you. Councilmember Hanselring?
That's for a second.
I have a motion in a second. I have some other lights on. Is that for discussion, gentlemen?
I'd like to discuss.
All right.
I'd like to see if Councilmember Markham would be receptive to amending that motion to add the stipulation that this be accepted, providing the acceptance of the site plan by the Fire Department.
Sure. Staff directives.
And Councilmember Markham?
Yes, ma'am.
Your light's on.
Turn it off.
Not anymore. All right, we have a motion in a second. Please register your vote. Motion passes unanimously with Councilmember Arp not in attendance. The next agenda item is our Visitors and Citizens Forum, and I have some speaker's Thank you. Mr. Terry Woodell, Woodle, I'm sorry if I mess up your name, Woodell, please step to the podium and state your name and address for the record.
Madam Mayor, I'm City Councilman Terry Woodell. I reside at 2026 Halton Road. And what I'm here to talk about, I've been issued a notice about parking. And the ordinance about parking having an approved service, any other citizen in the city, of course, they can park in the driveway. If there's not room for a second vehicle, they'll park in the street. And of course, being on Halton Road, of course, it'd be dangerous to park in the street, but there are no parking signs there. And I've been parking beside the driveway for 22 years now. And I can't afford right now, with a kid in college, to pave it. So I need to look at the variance or some solution to parking. I don't know, maybe we could take the sidewalks from Kirby and pour it up there for a sidewalk. I don't know. Yeah, but, yeah, it's kind of a catch-22 for me and for the city, too. And that's what I'm here tonight to do, is to maybe come up with some type of resolution or variance to the ordinance something.
Mr. Woodle, we do have an ordinance against vehicles parking on the grass. We've had it for a very long time. And I guess you've just been lucky for 26 years.
Twenty-two years.
Twenty-two years.
Yeah. I was told, last year, believe it or not, somebody said something about the grandfather clause, but I don't know if it falls into that or not.
Let me tell you who you can speak with. You can speak with Mr. Wes Cottongame. If you will give him a call, perhaps he can help you with that.
Okay.
This being, yes, this being our Visitors and Citizens Forum, the council is not, we don't debate or comment on this. But I can refer you to that gentleman, and then if he sees the need, he can bring it back to the council, and we can put it on the agenda as a regular agenda item.
Okay.
At which point, we can discuss it.
Okay. So...
So if you'll give, if you'll give him a call.
All right.
Okay?
All right.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
Mr. Wayne Iverson?
I'm Mr. Iverson. Thank you, Mayor. I'm Pat Davenport. I live at 3501 Jane Lane. And I hope that most citizens know that Halton City Chartered 50 years ago, May the 10th, 1950. And so we have a 50th anniversary celebration coming up this Saturday, May the 13th, at 10 o'clock, right out, right out here on this parking lot. And we do have a program lined up, and I hope that all of you will come. I want to remind everyone and invite everyone, and we will dedicate the anniversary plaza and plant the capsule. And also, I have one other item I'd like to say. I'm also on the volunteer service board, and we will be painting a house on 3608 on May the 20th at Aurora Street. And we'd like to invite anybody that would like to come out and help with this endeavor, because we're always looking for volunteers to help with these projects. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next agenda item are announcements and events. Council, do we have, Councilmember Williams?
Yes, ma'am. I'm surprised Mr. Davenport didn't mention it. June 4th, we're having our 50th anniversary Motorcycle Track Rally. It's going to take place up behind the Shannon Center. It's going to start registration, it's going to be about 9:00 AM. There's going to be motorcycles and motor tracks. I believe that's like a Volkswagen with a motorcycle tire on the front of it. And we're going to do about an 80-mile rally, going up north side of Tarrant County, back over in the Wise County, and back over here, and we're going to meet back down it. I think the last bike is due back in about 2:30 Sunday afternoon. So we'd like to invite citizens of Halton City to come out. Come on, Mr. Davenport, say something else.
Well, we would like to invite the citizens out for their motorcycle rally. We will have a bike show, and it will be public's choice, so you have an opportunity to come out and vote on a bicycle, buy a motorcycle or a trike. They're called trikes. And we're going to give trophies for the first, second, and third place winners. So y'all come on out and, on June the 4th, and vote for those. And I think we're going to start about 2:30, wasn't it? 2:30 for judging on that.
We're going to have food, concession stands set up, going to have lots of fun. And like we're saying, we're up 9:00 to 2:30. Y'all want to come by, it's probably going to last on past 2:30. So if you want to see a bunch of different, she just held up five fingers, that means 5:00. So if you want to see a lot of different kind of motorcycles and a lot of different kind of people from a lot of places, come on down and join us. And also, another plug, July the 4th, we're going to have a big 50th anniversary bash party. So I'm chairman of that board, and we're going to give them one they'll never forget.
Councilmember Ombi?
This is an announcement that I didn't bring up in the pre-council, but it's a good one. And for a change, since this is my last night, I wanted to say something also that entails my own life, believe it or not, because she supported my timeout all these years. This Thursday, they're going to be honoring all the teachers that won the Golden Apple Awards. And the only reason I'm going to brag on my wife, too, is because at Holiday Heights, she was picked as Teacher of the Year as well. And she would kill me to even know that I was telling anybody on TV that she got that award, but I'm proud of her. And she's very humble about it, and I want to take my hat off to all the ladies that teach and have taught and will always be, male and female, the true pillars of the community. I just want to make sure everybody knew that Thursday, they will be honoring all the teachers over here. What time does that thing start? It starts around 6:30, 7:00.
I would say 6:30.
Okay, in the chamber.
Normally, that's what they do, yeah.
Right, to honor the teachers. And I want to make sure everybody knew that, that they are honoring our teachers, and we are proud of them.
Thank you.
Very proud of my wife, Claudia.
Who is that again?
That would be Claudia Ombi, Teacher of the Year at Holiday Heights.
I just want to make sure we get that out there. Tomorrow evening, we are going to be canvassing the elections, and the reason we haven't done it previously, as in tonight, is because according to state law, we have to wait three days, and tomorrow will be the third day. So tomorrow evening, we'll canvass the elections, and we're going to do a rather informal oath of office and swearing-in, and then we will do it again at the next council meeting, which will be June the 5th. Then we'll do a more formal ceremony at that time. But I wanted everyone to know the schedule, so in case anybody would like to be there and wave at your new candidate or whatever. And last Wednesday night, I think it was, we had a dreadful storm that sort of picked on Halton City, a little bit tougher than it did anyone, anyone else around us. And Grace Fellowship Church, down on the corner of Glenview and Denton Highway, got hit extremely hard. They're one of the two hardest-hit in our entire community. They're without a roof. And they had nothing but wonderful things to say about our emergency team and our Fire Department that went down there and helped them until 1:00 AM to try to put everything back together again. And if you have a little extra time and you feel in the volunteer spirit, I'm sure they could use your help down there. And in the meantime, I want to say thank you to our Cracker Jack firemen. Councilmember Williams?
I had one other thing I forgot. Bobby Arthur, that senior citizen, told me that the 22nd of May, they're going to have a luncheon down there, and they're going to be honoring the pals and some of the volunteers from the high school. And I want to brag on them like we did the Fire Department. They've helped us all year. Those seniors down there, and some of the juniors are in that program. Anytime we needed something, one of the projects we've been on, 50th anniversary, anything we've asked them to do, they've come and they've done, and they haven't complained. And I really appreciate those kids up there. And Bobby and them are going to give them appreciation luncheon the 22nd of May, and I just want to remind them about that and tell all the kids thanks.
And for all volunteers.
And all volunteers.
One other thing I'd like to mention to everyone, I don't know if you saw the article in yesterday's Hometown Star that had to do with rabies and your animals, but it's really getting out of control. There have been rabid skunks as close to us as Keller and bats in Fort Worth. And any of you that have dogs and cats, I suggest you get them their rabies shots. Texas, the entire state of Texas is under a quarantine. A rabbit animal bites your cat or your dog, they bite you, the animal's destroyed, and the shots you're going to have to take are not very pleasant. And if discovered, your animal's impounded, if they're found, without a current rabies tag. So it's a health issue is the reason I'm bringing this up. It's not just an animal issue. For a few dollars, you'll protect your pet and anybody your pet may come in contact with. And it's really, it's really a big item. They're, they're out there, so just, just be careful and see that your animal's taken care of. The next agenda item will be our boards and commissions, and we don't have any appointments or reappointments. I'm sure, do we? We do have an appointment?
Yes.
Very well. Councilmember Jennings?
I would like to take this opportunity to appoint soon-to-be ex-councilmember Ed Ombi to place one of the library board. And I think we have his address somewhere on file here.
Okay. And Councilmember Markham?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Recently, I received a letter of resignation from my Point of Recreation Board appointee, Ms. Donna Roberts. In Ms. Roberts' place, I would like to appoint Mr. Brad Dunn to that board in place seven. I think Mr. Dunn will do a good job, he's expressed some sincere interest, and I would move the resignation.
Thank you, Councilman. Excused absences, now I do believe we're all here except for Mr. Arp that left early. So if Councilmember Quinones and Councilmember Ombi will meet me at the podium, we have a little something to say.
She not going to ratify? Madam Mayor, are we not going to vote on those appointments? Do we not have to do that?
Yes, let's ratify those here, shall we?
I'm not telling you what to do now.
Okay.
Okay. I feel much better now.
Resignations are ratified. Thank you.
I know Ed feels better about that.
I feel much better.
Ed, was that a conflict for you to ratify yourself?
I'm going to accept it.
Well, we're sorry to lose you. Let's see, you've been six years. It says 94. It says 94. Oh, excuse me. Okay, so it hasn't been six years.
It's a typo.
It's been four years. Presented to Tom Kinyonas with sincere appreciation for your service and devotion. Councilmember, place four, City of Haltem City, May of 1996 through May of 2000. Tom, Godspeed in whatever you decide to do.
I just tried to take a few minutes. I know it's been a long evening, and so I appreciate the, appreciate the plaque and the recognition. I just want to say thank you, first of all, to the citizens who allowed me to serve for four years. She may have been corrected, May 94, because that's basically when we started a lot of this stuff, but I was actually elected in 96, and I, every race I've had has been a hard one, and I guess I shouldn't have expected any less. But I want to first also thank the Lord who's allowed me to serve and enabled me to do that. And I believe that public service is a high calling, and I think he gives that to anyone who is elected, and he expects a lot of us of that. I also want to thank my wife, Michelle, and my kids, Caleb and Jessica, who have been here for over two and a half hours, and they've been, this shows the patience they've had with me for four years. So I appreciate that, and I want to publicly thank them for that. They've not only sacrificed their time, but they've sacrificed a lot of other things with that to allow me to, to give away my time to the citizens. I, I won't speak about all the achievements when I, or anything, because I leave that to you. I tried to run with the purpose in mind that I have a duty to serve the citizens and, and that I have an obligation to do, give them not only my best effort, but try to keep my word, to display to them the principles and things that I believe in and which would govern my actions and the decisions I make. And I have attempted to do that. Sometimes it's not been popular, and sometimes it's not been perhaps understood by those on the council or, or other citizens. But I've always tried to do that, and I felt that, to this extent, I felt I've accomplished that. I do want to thank the present council and former council members and mayors that I have worked with. I know that at times, I've tried their patience as well, and I appreciate that. But I, I just want to read a few quotes, because a lot of what governs what I think and how I've approached issues, even tonight, on the one issue that I voted against, for, among other reasons, governs the way I think, and I'll try to keep it short. I'm not going to read this long quote that I have written out, but I'll read a couple of them. It says that "Those who expect to reap the blessings of freedom must, like men, undergo the fatigue of supporting it." Thomas Paine wrote that back in 1700, just before the revolution. And that's what I saw this as to be. This is maybe small potatoes to a lot of people, but you hear the citizens that come up here, and they are pleading for their rights, they're pleading for things they believe in to them, and this is the most important thing they're going to be doing in their lifetime, is standing right here at this podium. And we, as elected officials, must protect the rights and sensibilities of those citizens and to try to do what is best for everybody in the community. And that's what I've attempted to do. And I remember, I always keep in mind, even on the smallest issues, that the price of liberty is eternal vigilance, and I will always maintain that. And sometimes I've been wrong, and I'll admit that. But I've always felt that that was the standard I needed to go by. But I feel today, as I did four years ago when I took my oath, that it's still a great day to be an American. Thank you very much.
How do you follow that, Ed?
They're all alike, but it's still special, and we're, I'm going to read this one as well. Presented to Ed Oenby with sincere appreciation for your service and devotion. Councilmember, place six, City of Haltem City, January 1997 to May of 2000. Councilmember Oenby? I've worked with a lot of council members, and this was, this, this guy here I could always depend on to just be so level-headed. And I just have, want you to know, I'm going to miss you, and I appreciate having the time that we had to work together.
I'm, I didn't write a speech, and I'm not going to. I've never written a speech since I've been here. I do want to thank everybody in the city. I do want to thank God for the opportunity to serve this city and the people of the city. I think God Almighty Himself is the one who ultimately rules over all of us, and I think that's what's tempered the council, the employees, and the people in the city to try and always keep the people of the city first. All I do know is this: It has been real. It's been exciting. It's been fun. It's been informational, and it's been a learning experience. I love to see the people in here, because these are the ones that truly are concerned about the city. I don't care what the issue is, as long as you come forward. That's what matters. When this room stops filling up, then the city's got a problem. As long as this room continues to fill, we will be proud and progressive. A council that I've worked with, I've worked with, I guess, three different councils in three years almost. It's incredible. And there's not been one that hasn't been colorful or exciting. There's not one that hasn't been a joy to work with each and every one of y'all. And John knows I'm talking about him, too. Tom Kinnonas knows that he and I have probably seen less eye to eye than any two people in the world, but that's the beauty of it. We've got up here and debated and argued and fought over different issues and still tried to come out with one thing: What can we do that's right for the city and right for the people? Y'all have heard that old saying before, and it's still true. If you ever know it, I think they ought to put it on the wall up here sometime, you know, that says you can please some of the people some of the time. You can please all the people some of the time, but you can never please all the people all the time. That's perfect for a city council. Okay? That's absolutely the best thing in the world for a city council. Because that's the truth. You're not always going to make everybody happy. It's not your job. You're not, if you don't believe me, be a parent and see if that works that way. I've never seen a parent yet that came out and said, "I made my kids happy all my life," and they worked out perfect. It doesn't happen. So I will leave you imparting with this. I do want to thank my wife and my children for persevering over the last three years and plus the time that I've spent on all the boards and stuff, and that's been a blast. We have had a lot of accomplishments. I don't think we need to name them. I have told everybody this. I said, "It's sad," and I don't mean this wrong, but Tom, you know, the one thing I'm going to be remembered for the most, don't you, is if we don't get this, this transfer storage settled properly. All those other things we did, they don't remember those. You know how that works. So we got to get that one right. But I do thank you for your time, your support, and I do ask that you continue to voice yourself, because it is your city, and it is your life. So embrace it and enjoy it and persevere. Thank you.
Counselor, I presume there is no executive session this evening? That's correct.
That is correct.
That is correct. Thank you very much. Then we will adjourn at 9:47 p.m.